All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Planning Commission meeting of September 10, 2019, our regular meeting. We have some minutes from last week that were updated and provided with us at study session. Is there a motion to approve those or a motion to approve the changes?
Motion to approve as written.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Communications from the audience, this is your opportunity to come up and talk about something that is not on the agenda. Anything that crosses your mind that may be planning related? Going once, twice, and three times, and we're moving on to new business. Jenna, would you like to handle our first topic there, 159 South River Avenue?
Yes, thank you, good evening. Here, the applicant Dennis Jacobs and Midwest Construction Group is requesting approval for a five-story mixed-use building with thirty-two to thirty-six residential units. There would also be main floor retail along Seventh Street here, as well as potentially a second-floor office that would be located just above the retail and cover ground-floor Which they are proposing, I believe it's sixty-one assigned parking spaces, with a private fob entry garage which would be located off of Sixth Street here. In addition, they're proposing a pull-off area located right here on Sixth Street, and that would be for deliveries and for potentially emergency services, as well as moving in, having an area to do so. It's a total building of twenty-two thousand nine hundred forty square feet, with units ranging from nine hundred square feet to potentially three thousand square feet. Snow melt is also being proposed to extend along Seventh Street, River Avenue, and Sixth Street, as well as in these private areas through easements. The existing transit stop located about here on River Avenue will be moved, and the applicant has talked with Max Transit regarding that. Landscape planters will be, are proposed along the building, and existing right-of-way trees will be cut, as well as added to wherever needed to make sure that there's the thirty-foot measurement between trees. And then a vegetative first-floor roof is also proposed, which would be used as open space for the residents. There's also additional green building features proposed, bike parking, both for public and for private bicyclists, alternative fuel charging stations for the residents, and solar-thermal energy systems, to name just a few. As part of this request, there's the need for the vote for the site plan itself. They are requesting one OPR, optional plan review, and if you recall, there are four criteria to determine that, which is on page three of your staff report. They are to provide a special pedestrian-oriented feature, does not create a significant interruption in the continuity of street-level pedestrian movement and interest, is compatible and integrated with adjoining properties and nearby public improvements, and is not for providing parking and/or drive-through access. The OPR that they are requesting is pertaining to their transparency. They're requesting to have obscured glass so that there would be a screening between the street, or the sidewalk, and the vehicles that would be in the first-floor, ground-floor level building. They are also requesting two waivers, I'm sorry, three waivers, two regarding the front yard, right here. There would be, the request is for a thirteen-point-five-foot setback off of River Avenue, where the column will be located, so that's the support structure, so we measure the setback to that support structure. So that would be thirteen-point-five feet, where six-foot maximum is required. And then, the second one, again for this corner, would be off of Seventh Street, so it would be eight-point-six feet, where a six-foot maximum is required without providing for the OPR. I'm sorry, without providing for the waiver. And then finally, the side setback waiver is also requested, and this will be a maximum of zero-point-five feet, and it really has to do with the way that the lot lies, so it'll be about zero-point-two feet here, and then zero-point-five feet there at the waiver. Or, I'm sorry, at the property line. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Would you like to come down and make a presentation, or answer questions from the commission members? I love it when they argue. Name and address, please, for the record.
Mike Corby with Integrated Architecture, 4090 Lake Drive, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
And Dennis Jacobs, 610 Lawn Avenue, Howland, Michigan, 49424.
Thank you.
First of all, we just want to say thank you to Jenna and Mark and the city staff. It's, they've made the process very clear, been very supportive and helpful to get through this. They're, remarkably, we don't have a lot of complications to this application, but the ones that Jenna did mention, I think, we, I don't know if we can, I don't know how to scroll through the slides, but just to add a little bit more color on the waivers, the corner waiver, basically, which is two waivers, one from River and one from Seventh, relate to just kind of creating a nicer pedestrian entryway into the space without impeding pedestrian flow, as well as kind of making room for a pole that's on that corner, so I think that's one thing that we show in the rendering, but it's also something I think we've talked about getting cleaned up with an easement maybe in the future. And then the east one is really due to the fact that our building will be square and the site's not square, so it goes from zero feet to, I think to point-five feet, or something like that. Right. But these are some color renderings that we supplied Jenna, in addition to the earlier submissions that we've developed since the application. So, again, five-story building, residential, we do have one office space that would be on the second level with terraces. So, I think the materials that we're proposing are stone, some metal panels, and some wood-like metal as well. We do have a sample of the glass that would be recommended for the OPR.
Start at one end and we'll pass to the right, just like potatoes.
And our thought is, we wanted to maintain the sixty percent glass requirement, so that is not an OPR request, but we felt that a combination of using some screen wall with vegetated wall, vegetated green wall, as well as the obscure glass, would be a better presentation to pedestrians and to the road, so that you'll get the transparency, but we won't get the view of the parking garage itself. And just a couple clarifications, I think the footprint of the building is twenty thousand square feet, the actual building in total will be about a hundred thousand square feet, with all the units and the parking garage.
Sorry.
No, I think you just read the, the footprint, right. So, we're very excited about the project, it's, to date, we've got a lot of good feedback. In fact, Dennis has already got potential residents contacting him based on some of the public release that's already had. And then the last thing, we did do the sound study, and our building did get an approval rating from that study. So, I think we've tried to check off all the boxes, and again, I want to thank Jenna for helping us get through that, so.
Are there any questions from commission members?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question.
Fred?
I'm interested in the key sustainability principles that are in Jenna's report, and I wonder if you could please explain what some of these matters are, and to what extent you're actually using them. For example, the solar-thermal energy system, what are you doing there? What is that, what is that all about?
We're going to explore solar thermal for domestic preheat of water. We used it actually on, we did a project for Spectrum Health in Zeeland. We use that system, it's actually very successful. I know people think it's kind of strange in Michigan to rely on that, but it was the most feasible of the energy, kind of renewable energy kind of things we looked at. We will be looking at photovoltaics, although we're not sure how feasible those will be, but the solar thermal, we were pretty confident that that's going to be feasible, to go along with our systems, which will be energy-efficient. We're using a central plant, we're using a heat pump system, which will be, instead of having each unit have its own system, which is less efficient, we're using a central plant, which will be more efficient to the building and to the residents.
And so, that's wonderful, I mean, I think that's commendable, that you're doing that as well. What about the energy-efficient HVAC system incorporating heat pumps? Tell us a little about that.
We're using a heat pump system, we will have a, we're using a mixed-mode system, so all the residents will have ventable operable windows, so they'll be able to use natural ventilation as part of the ventilation system for the mechanical systems, which is a healthier way to do it, that reduces energy costs. But again, I think the biggest benefit we're going to get is by using the central plant and having a much more efficient system that supplies the residents versus less efficient kind of individual systems, so consolidation, I think, is the key.
Consolidation of the two.
Right.
How about, to what extent are you using energy-efficient LED lighting?
Predominant, it will be, we'll be using LED lighting. We're going to explore some other systems, I think, again, we didn't want to commit to things that were in exploration, so we've talked geothermal, we're not sure that that's got benefit. Again, we used it at the lead-certified building we did for Spectrum and Zeeland, but again, some of these things, we haven't had the opportunity yet to kind of test whether they're going to be viable. We are going to be, we talked today, actually, with the builder, Midwest, about insulation, our values, to really try to kind of have those as high as they can be, so we're kind of more super-insulating, so again, it's been a very comprehensive look at the sustainability features.
I'm really impressed by the package of things that you're proposing here. I think this goes along with sort of the innovative approach that you're taking to the whole building, and I commend you for doing that.
Thank you. The vegetated roof is another kind of big feature that we're incorporating on the second level platform, in lieu of a roof, I guess.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant?
Well, just simply visitor parking.
So, we have more parking than is required, so residents will have the ability to allow their visitors in, there'll be a secure point into the parking area, but they'll be able to, the visitors will be able to contact the residents, the residents will be able to let them in, and they'll be able to direct them to the spaces that are available. So we have, that was part of Dennis's directive, is to make sure he had more parking than was needed to supply the residents. So, the office user, the same, they'll be able to let their customers in through the, through a phone system or a key system, and then direct them to the right space.
Plus, the number of units is probably a little fluid yet at this point in time.
The number is a little fluid, right. Based on some preliminary discussions that, you know, interest has been shown, I think I expressed this once before already, but that's why I put thirty-two to thirty-six, that number could even go down a little more, I don't know. One person was talking about a larger space, he'd be looking at, basically, taking up two, what are now represented as two full two-bedroom units. Well, if that happens, he's still going to get two parking places, so that creates, you know, some extra spaces as well. So, you know, I see that number probably going down, or if I took one of the larger spaces, and I discussed this before too, and divide it in half, then it becomes two one-bedroom units, they get one space, so, you know, we tried to calculate that out as best we could, so.
Any, Lynn?
I'm concerned about the opacity of the glass, that does not seem particularly opaque.
Rain glass?
Yeah, I imagined something different, something different, I think.
We actually wanted to maintain the light transmission without, so we, it's actually a clear glass, it just has the patterning on it to obscure view. So we still want the light, we still want the, I guess, the dynamic side of the light coming through without going to, we didn't think a tinted glass would be the right approach.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if you look at that facade on River, you know, picture all that glass that's on that side, I think trying to transition from clear glass, and we could, but, because I proposed that as well before, but I think, looking at it further, and then going from clear glass, you know, full transparent clear glass, to a, well, a smooth glass, but tinted, you know, just visual, I'm a very visual individual myself, anyway, but, you know, I think this rain glass or a obscure glass, certainly clear, and again, there's various, you know, obscure glasses, you know, we happen to choose rain glass, but it could be a different type of obscure glass, too, but. The rain glass is one that, really, when you look through it from any distance at all, it gets very obscure. When you get it right up to your face, maybe not so much, but especially from a distance, let's say you're on a sidewalk and you're looking through rain glass, you will not be able to tell it's car, you know, you'll see something in there maybe, but you won't see cars or shapes of cars or anything like that, so we thought it was a good choice. There was another one I looked at, was reeded glass, which is a real nice-looking glass, too, but that, you'll see more shapes behind some others than you will rain glass, so that's why I chose that.
And I think the other thing, the other component to the obscurity, I guess in a general sense, is we are doing the green screen up to about five feet minimal, so the headlights, for instance, which would obviously shine through that glass, are going to be obscured by the fact that it's a solid wall, and we were able to do that and still maintain the sixty percent glass.
Red?
This question is about the setbacks that you're requiring, requesting on River Avenue. You're going from a requirement of six feet maximum to thirteen-point-five feet to the columns. The setbacks in the downtown are important for a lot of reasons, there are a big design consideration, they've figured prominently in other deliberations that we have made on buildings in the downtown, and I'm just wondering, what is the reason why you're going for that larger of a waiver?
The effect, if you could go to the, we did a little graphic.
Yeah, I'm actually trying to find that right.
First of all, it's a very limited area, so it's not the length of the, that property, it's limited just to that south, that southwest corner, and I think the way you guys measure the setback is to the column line, but if you see, what we've tried to do is get the building as close to the corner without actually impinging on that light pole, but we didn't want columns to come down that close, so we did a little graphic that showed you what would happen if we met the requirement.
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm not finding it real quick with my items. However, they will be very close to the street signal pole if they were to not meet it. Staff, looking at this, you know, if you, if you think about many of the other downtown stores on Eighth Street and whatnot, they do have that corner cut, and it certainly enhances pedestrian and.
Yeah, if there were, if there were a place to do it, the corner would be the place to do it, and it allows us to kind of have a little bit more hospitable point of entry to the building without impeding pedestrian flow, so it's not a large area, but if you could, Jenna, go to the rendering that shows the south, shows that corner. I don't know if you can zoom in or not, but, we're taking the fascia, I'll try to point it out.
So, the column is here, but we've actually taken the fascia, so the effective setback is really not, it's not thirteen feet, because the fascia actually comes out, so it's come out, and then we've kind of clipped the corner so that it kind of differs to the light pole, but it has a small recess.
This is similar to like JB and me, home and company type situation.
Is the rest of the building on River Avenue meeting the?
Correct, yes, it is. In fact, in fact, the rest, other than, excuse me, other than the practical issue we have on the east property line, everything else is compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commission members? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll be holding a public hearing now regarding this property. This will be an opportunity for you to speak in favor or against, and I'm going to open that public hearing now. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Brian Basgraff, 26 West Sixth Street, the neighbor to the east. As well, I think we purchased that property fifteen years ago, and when we first started building cabinets in the old building, it was just Lake Tire and us on the street. Things have changed, we've had a couple of restaurants. I also own and have an office on 184 South River, been there twenty years, so I'm sort of kitty-corner as well, and certainly can see it from both sides. I'm in favor of the building, I think this is a fabulous opportunity for homeownership in the downtown. As I've spoke to you in the past, our downtown special, it's world-renowned, it's an amenity. I can attest to living down here for five years, that it's a fabulous lifestyle. It's an expensive lifestyle, especially if you eat out a lot, which my wife and I tend to do. So it is one of the more expensive places to live, but it is a great lifestyle, and I think this building celebrates what's good about downtown Howland. So I'm in favor of the project, but also the cutout on River, I walk to work occasionally, and the property line corner is dangerously close to that curb. I mean, if you stood where the corner stake is supposed to be, you'd likely have your feet run over, my truck's making the curb there, so I think the cutout is great, and maybe I can catch a dry weight for the light as I duck under the rest of you, as I wait for the light to change, so, in favor of the building, in favor of the cutout.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak regarding this application? Going once, twice, three times, we're closing the public hearing. Commission members, any conversations amongst ourselves, or we're looking for a motion? We do have, we've got to do three or four, I can't remember.
There's three waivers, one OPR, and then the site plan.
Do you need the waivers done individually?
That's up to you.
I'm thinking, since they're not, you know, they're all unique but similar, and we've had quite a discussion on them already, I would move to approve all three.
All right, would you like to have the site plan approved, or the site plan voted on, waivers are voted on, and the OPR voted on, or what order would you prefer to have those in, John?
I'd prefer the other way around.
All right, let's start with the optional plan review.
I move that we approve the OPR as stated.
Support.
Matt, roll call, please.
All right, Corbin?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ben Antwerp?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
DeBlock?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Vote passes.
All right, setback waivers, it sounds like we can do one motion for all three if we like?
I would move to approve the three.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor, now let's go vice versa.
DeBoer?
Trying to speed things up.
Yes. Raymond?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
DeBlock?
Yes.
Ben Antwerp?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Vote passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, you're free to leave, and you'll receive a letter of approval from me tomorrow.
Thank you all, thank you.
Our next, our next application is 421 East Thirty-second Street. Jenna, would you like to do a little review of that, please?
The applicant Kenny Lynn is requesting site plan approval to construct on this three-point-five, I'm sorry, three-point-one-five acre site. It's currently vacant, they're requesting a restaurant and banquet space, and then three retail spaces, and then six apartment units on top of the retail spaces, which would be on the west side of the building here. An outdoor seating area is proposed for this location on the east side of the building, as is building perimeter landscaping and parking lot landscaping. Street trees and intense shrubs and plantings are proposed in the Thirty-second Street and Hastings Avenue right-of-ways. A approximately one-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot rain garden is being proposed in the north of the site, along with their pond for stormwater and drainage, and then there will be some landscaping in the back here, in terms of trees, we discussed at study session, that potentially in reaction to further thought and insight from the Applewood neighbors to the north, that potentially a four-foot fence would be required as a condition if planning commission sees fit along the berm in order to provide screening between these two properties. Also, I had mentioned, as a condition of approval, there would be a sidewalk that would come off of the Thirty-second Street sidewalk and go to the building for easier accessibility for pedestrians. In addition to the site plan and on the site, the Transportation Services Department has requested, and they, and the applicant has accepted, has approved the request, to construct a hundred-foot extension of the left turn lane along Thirty-second Street for easier egress and ingress off of the Thirty-second Street. And noted should also be that there's a drive off of Hastings as well. We discussed a lot of this during the study session, I'm happy to go over it again if you'd like me to. In addition to the site plan request, there is a waiver for the setback from the property line to the parking lot. As you recall, it's a twenty-five-foot minimum requirement, and they're proposing about a ten-foot minimum requirement with intense landscaping.
Just because I suspect it might be a concern to all, on the curb cut on Thirty-second, we do reserve a right to require that to be a right-in and right-out if accidents warrant it, is that correct?
Yes, it is, yes it does, and that's in the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Yeah, providing the audience with that.
No problem. So landscaping, you can see here on the screen, they've illustrated the differences between the external landscaping and internal landscaping, we're fairly happy with that. And then the other issue, or the other vote requirement, would be for the amendments that are being requested from the original nineteen-ninety-seven PUD agreement, and those are for there to be another curb cut off of Thirty-second Street, rather than it being connected through the units, the retail units next door. And then also for the signage, as we discussed, so instead of the requirement for there to be height maximum of six feet above grade and twelve feet from the property right-of-way. and 12 feet from the property right of way, and a 32 square foot maximum sign area, they're requesting a maximum sign height of 25 feet and a sign area of 75 square feet in conjunction with the C2 Highway Commercial Zone districts, district standards. The applicants are also here if you would like to get additional information.
The applicant would like to come down and speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hello, Mike Baker with Nederfeld, 347 Hoover Boulevard. And Jenna, as usual, has done a great job of summarizing the application. And I'm here representing Kenny Lynn and the proposed mixed-use plan. This is intended to be the new home of the Shanghai Restaurant and the King Buffet, which is, Shanghai is right across the street right now. And so, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
You're okay with the current staff recommendations?
Okay with the current staff recommendations, yes. Went through those. I think we and the applicant understand. The one that I had a little bit of a question on is from the city engineer regarding some of the traffic analysis, but I think we can work through that with him. He's looking for some more information on impacts to Hastings Avenue. But, yeah, we're comfortable with the requirements as they're stated.
We did receive a letter on this application, correct? And one of the concerns there was headlights. And one of the thoughts is that you have put a four-foot fence on top of that berm?
This is for the neighbor to the residence to the north.
To the north.
Correct.
That that would greatly reduce that possibility? Would that be something you would be?
I think the applicant would entertain that, yes.
Okay. So if that's an additional requirement, that would be okay?
Yeah.
Talk to us about the sign.
So the sign is always a kind of a key element for retail and restaurant. And the property right across the street has a freestanding pylon-type sign. And I think the intent is to sort of duplicate that on this side of the street. And being that the C2 commercial district is right adjacent there next door, that, that was the desire.
Do you have any additional information regarding what the sign is?
I do not have a design specifically for the sign, no.
We're gonna, we're gonna jump off that bridge when we get there. Are there any questions from commission members? Come on, Scott first, I guess.
Can you explain the rationale first regarding the sign and almost doubling the, the size of the sign? Can you explain the rationale, why you're looking to do that? Then secondly is how you're going to handle snow load off of 32nd when you're looking for a waiver for that setback? I mean, how is that going to be addressed, especially with the sidewalk?
Yeah, right. First item, specifically the sign, like I mentioned, I think the intent is to have something roughly equivalent to what's existing across the street at the existing facility. Understand that the PUD had a more restrictive requirement in terms of signage. But feeling that the sign is very important for the retail use, survival. So that is sort of the rationale behind that. For the, for the sidewalk, I am in conversation with the city engineer. Understand there is a desire for additional snow storage in the parkway between the sidewalk and the curb. So I understand that we'll be allowed to reconstruct the sidewalk further into our site. Right now, we have about a 12-foot, 12 to 13-foot behind the sidewalk to the parking lot. So I think we're, the idea is to bring that down to 10-foot, and that additional would flip over onto the parkway. So it's a net equivalent amount of green space, but just more of it'll be in the parkway and can also provide snow storage.
How many feet would that be?
I think it's five.
Five feet for snow?
Yeah.
Which was approved by Transportation Services.
Repeat that.
So it'll be five feet lawn area for snow storage along the parkway, the street. Then you'll have the sidewalk, six-foot wide sidewalk, which they will have to move north. So they will take out the current sidewalk and then redo the sidewalk so that they're going a couple of feet, two feet north. So then, there'll be 10 feet in between the sidewalk line and the parking lot.
And we're happy to work with staff and traffic safety on that. There's actually a, a fair amount of frontage is in the taper. So the parkway is actually kind of an increasing wedge there. So, you know, the portion that's only going to be five foot wide is probably half of the site, plus or minus or less.
Is the, is the sidewalk along 32nd Street one of the sidewalks that gets plowed during the su- winter?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any exceptions, are there? Question, answer?
I just wondered what is going on with the Shanghai Restaurant across the street, if you're moving to the other side.
I don't know. I'd have to ask the applicant on that, what, I'm assuming it gets sold? Are you putting the existing property up? You don't have a buyer currently?
Slight conflict of interest.
We're advertising it within our redevelopment-ready sites online and as part of our certification process.
Okay.
That's what he means.
To clarify.
All right. Any additional questions for the applicant?
Just a concern, just making sure that the greenery that we do have for around the curb cuts, that, that's just visible for the cars to see the sidewalk.
Yes, the traffic safety had the same concern as to maintain the, the clear vision corridors there. So most of the plantings there, I think, are lower shrubs, and the trees are kind of back. So we'll be definitely looking at that with the specific design there.
Anyone else? Questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. You're gonna have a public hearing on this matter, which I will open now. If you'd like to speak for or again this matter, come to the podium, and please state your name and address for the record. Don't, yeah, don't hesitate. I'm, I'm quick on closing if nobody's looking.
Good afternoon. Stelios Dokianakis, 399 East 32nd. We're gonna be the neighbors to the west of the property. I'm the board president of South Shore Place, and also I own one of the units. I had a few questions. I was here at the last meeting, and a few things were addressed. There were some concerns raised. I was able to go back and revisit some. One was as to the potential specified land use for the commercial properties that are going to become available. There were some questions as to what could go into that, and would it significantly alter the neighborhood and the, the type of businesses that go in? We didn't get a specific answer, but the PUD does specify land uses that are acceptable. And I just wanted to confirm that potentially the tenants will comply with those PUD requirements.
We are not granting a waiver for that, so they would be required to meet those requirements.
Thank you. Second, my one concern, looking at the renderings and elevations, I was not clear on whether the HVAC units, the heating and air conditioning units, the ventilation units that are significant in size for a property that size and a restaurant, if they're obscured from public view from both 32nd and Hastings, or if they're, if they're not shown because they're not drawn in, but will be obvious, I think that'll significantly alter the appearance of the unit and cosmetic or appeal overall.
Is your concern at first floor level?
If they're visible from the road.
Okay.
And I know there can be plans for similar units to have walls that are fake walls erected to just obscure those from sight. So our intent is, you know, we, we are in favor of the development. We would like to welcome them to our neighborhood, or have them move across the street, but make it be an aesthetically pleasing addition to the neighborhood, not one that, you know, is questionable aesthetically. And as beautiful as the building may be, having huge air conditioning units on top does not really add to that cosmetic appeal.
I just, I want to clarify though, just so you, I get it. Your concern is not necessarily that they're on top, but they're not visible from 32nd?
Correct.
Okay.
As long as they're not visible, I think on top is typically, and, and our representative here can probably address that from Nederfeld, on top is typically how they are situated. But as long as they're not visible, we would not have any concerns. If they are, as they are now with the other property, there are some concerns.
I'm not sure what we can necessarily...
I mean, we could, you could require
Screening?
Screening, yeah.
And my...
Yeah, come on down, state your name and address, please. All right, well, I'm, they can tag-team it at this point.
I'm Bill Bull, I'm Mr. Builder, 20, 3259 25th Street in Hopkins. There's a four-foot screen wall on the front and both sides of this, so none of the units will be visible from the wall. And some of that wall is even higher, where he wants to put his signs. If you look at the elevations, none of them will be visible from the streets.
Okay, so you have a four-foot parapet basically running around?
Yep. And some of it's like an eight-foot parapet where he wants to put his sign up above.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, just have a couple of more questions?
Sure.
The, another issue that was raised or a question last time on the sustainability checklist, the affordable housing aspect of it. When the question was asked last time, the answer was it'll be market value. And I guess my question is, what are the requirements to comply with the affordable housing parameters?
There are no requirements for affordable housing.
Okay. So it doesn't mean necessarily?
No.
Okay. That answers that question. Thank you.
This is not something we're empowered to do.
Okay. And signage, I think, was partly addressed. Our concern was that there would be multiple signs in addition to what is on the building, but if there were plans for a freestanding sign on poles, as was the case with the previous unit. The last one is probably, our major concern is regarding the amendment to set, to change the setback reduction to 10 feet from the 25. Our concern is that'll significantly change the appearance of both of our units. Right now, we have a lot of green space. Bringing the setback down to a very, very small setback, 10 feet or less, my concern is it'll appear as a vast parking lot. I did not see any sign of plantings or trees or shrubbery to divide the two properties. And I, I understand it's, the standard is 25. The reduction was suggested for 10 feet. When I looked at the actual plans, the, the drawings show anywhere between 7.2 to 8.9. And another drawing, perhaps the older one, shows 5.2 to 6.6 feet. So it's not even the 10 feet.
I want to clarify what setback you're talking about.
From the
From 32nd?
Uh, no, from the property line of our property on 399, so essentially west of the property.
So that, that over there is, does not have a 25-foot requirement? The 25-foot requirement is only off of a, a street.
Is there a requirement for that one, for a setback?
It's a 10, 10 feet.
Okay. So would you say that 7.2 feet would be in violation of that requirement then, or not in compliance?
I believe that the last plan that I saw was at least 10 feet.
What was presented here, I think the most recent one was 7.2.
So that, that's another thing, is that in most zone districts, it's 10 feet. The planning commission can actually determine what they feel is, is adequate. Because it's not set in, in stone.
And, and if I may, just to clarify, we're not opposed to this, but we would like to assure that there are maybe some plantings to aesthetically divide the one property from the other, as opposed to allowing it to look like a vast parking lot. And then there was another concern, there was an elevation change of approximately two to three feet. And I was wondering how that was going to be addressed, if they're gonna bring it up closer to the property line so there's no soil erosion, you know, so there's nothing that happens in a negative way to impact our parking lot.
So that last concern, if, if you can respond to it?
Yeah, the, the elevation change, we can easily make up a foot or two in that seven feet. That's a real gentle slope. And I would just note, that side of the property is adjacent to another parking lot. So we're basically buffering parking lot to parking lot. And I think we have about twice as much green space on the property than what the adjacent one does. So all the plantings will be on our property. I don't know if I hit everything you were asking about, but, yeah, and we'll stabilize it with vegetation as permitted with the soil erosion control requirements.
So, and that was really just my last concern, that we have just a very, very narrow strip of grass between the two. And if there could be some plantings to just divide the two properties, so it doesn't look like a big Walmart kind of parking lot.
What's the, what's the setback of your parking lot from the property line?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So we would like to, if we could avoid that happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this application?
My name is Thelma Hookman, and I live at 775 Holly Creek Drive. And this is not my thing, but I have a very big concern about this project. I like to see new businesses in town, and I'm all for that. However, I have a very big concern about the entry-exit off 32nd Street. I have been in my property for 22 years, and as you know, it has changed from a farmland to a big thoroughfare from US 31 to 32nd Street. If you would sit in my porch with me for a day and count the hundreds and hundreds of cars that go down 32nd Street, you would wish that no more entry-exits would go onto 32nd Street. I'm very, very fearful about this, because 32nd Street is the only street that you can turn north on right now. You know that.
North onto 1, onto 31?
Onto 31, yes. And the traffic is unbelievable there. There are some times that our traffic is from 31 all the way to Hastings, waiting to get onto 31. And we in our complex sometimes cannot get out of our complex because of all the traffic. So all of the neighbors and I are very concerned about adding another entry-exit onto 32nd Street, and what that's going to do for the people who move. Another big concern is 32nd Street is one of the main thoroughfares for all of our emergency vehicles that come into Holland. There are many, many that come down 32nd Street every single day. I have counted already 25 in a day's time. This concerns me, because there are very many times they cannot get through that area between Hastings and Apple Avenue and the ballpark. So I know the city has looked at this. However, I am very, very concerned, because what I have seen in the growth in the last 22 years about what happens if we're going to put many more entry-exits onto 32nd Street, especially in that area from Lincoln to the highway. So I would really like to have your thoughts about that, and your concern, as well as mine, about what's going to happen in the next 20 years at that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenna, could you potentially relate what Brian White and the traffic information was that he had about extending the road, the road improvements and things of that ilk?
Certainly. So, first of all, the request for the applicant is to extend the left turn lane there 100 feet west from, from where it's existing. And then that additionally, looking at current crash patterns of the, the last three, the three years, there's only been three accidents right there at Hastings and... years, there's only been three accidents right there at Hastings and, and Thirty-Second, and five in between Hastings and Apple. So right now, he says that with the street widening and with providing the designated left turn lane into the development and for those turning left onto US thirty-one, that the need, or the, the need for any other measures isn't currently required. He has reserved the right to require a left in, or right in, right out off of Thirty-Second Street if the crash pattern does change. He also discussed some peak hour information, that four to, between four to five PM is their, the peak hour going both ways. And then it significantly drops off by six PM.
And just to clarify, he is our city traffic engineer, correct?
Yes, he is our city traffic engineer.
All right, is there anyone else to speak to this application?
My name's Jack, Jack Berghoff, and I live at three-eighty-five Holly Field Court in Centennial Villas condos, and I'm the president of the association. I'd like to make a plug for the walkability of our, of our neighborhood. There are probably between US thirty-one and Lincoln Avenue probably live, I think, a hundred fifty, two hundred people. And I'll grant you that many of us are a step or so slower than the average Hollander. But if we want to walk anywhere other than our own association property, we have to do a sprint across Thirty-Second Street, oftentimes, taking our lives into our own hands, as Thelma stated. If there could be some way of installing a walkway across Thirty-Second Street that would be convenient for the residents on the south side of Thirty-Second Street to get out across Thirty-Second into the neighborhoods there, that would be a great thing, I think. And secondly, if, and this probably involves traffic, the traffic department or whoever does these things, but a sidewalk along the south side of Thirty-Second Street from US thirty-one to Lincoln Avenue, so that we could say walk to Paul's Pharmacy without crossing Thirty-Second Street a couple of times, that would be a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marvin, can I, can I?
Yeah, jump in, Jenna.
So sir, we actually have a traffic committee that meets on a monthly basis that could potentially review this. What I'd ask you to do is send me an email, and then I can forward it onto the, the traffic committee, and they will look at it, whether or not they'll, they'll do it or when they'll do it. But, but that would be outside of this development's prerogative.
Also, any gaps in the sidewalk system can be ordered in by city council at any time. So, they hang out here on Wednesdays. You're welcome. Anyone else? Once, twice, three times, closing the public hearing? Comments, questions, conversations from planning commissioners? Nancy?
I'm also curious about the King buffet. Is that going to close as well, and everything is consolidating to this location?
Okay, another parcel available. Any other questions?
So procedural question.
Yep.
So procedural question, if we were to, the waiver, I think it's amendment one, waiver for the signage, if we were to deny that, they would just have to comply with the current site specifications, correct? It would not prevent them from having a full site approval?
That is correct, but then would they have the ability to come back with a signed design and amend it? To planning commission?
Yes, they can, if, if that's what you require as a condition.
So let me clarify, we could deny the sign requirement, or sign amendment?
Waiver.
Waiver, or amendment. But that would not prevent them from having an approved site plan by this.
Correct.
And I just want to express, as what you discussed, I completely understand what you're saying, I go down Thirty-Second all the time, and it is very difficult to maneuver that area. And it is a concern, because that's, that's the artery between the hospital and the Weaverley Fire Station. And so I know that there's a lot of traffic, emergency traffic, because way up and down on that roads. But I do know that we have this ability to put in this right turn, right in, right out only condition if things change. So I think with that in play, I think I would be apt to support the second cut-in.
Fred?
I have a, I have a concern about the reduction of the setback of twenty-five feet down to ten feet. I understand that the purpose of having that regulation is to have some kind of screening, visual screening from parking lots to sidewalks. And so with the reduction of it going down to ten feet, we see that there's a landscape plan that is going to have the same effect as if there were no landscaping at all. In other words, that landscaping plan with all those trees that are shown here are supposed to make up for that difference in length between the parking lot and the sidewalk. So my question is about the landscaping plan itself. Are these, are these trees that are, do they start off as saplings, and will it be finally screened ten years from now? Or how would we achieve the same kind of screening that we would have had in the, with the, with the regulation of twenty-five feet with a landscaping plan? Is it something, are these mature landscaping, are trees that are being put in here?
Just a question, Jen, if they went twenty-five feet, would there be a screening requirement?
Um, no, there wouldn't be.
So...
So the tree, the landscaping is making up for the reduction and the setback. And so what kind of screening?
Well, I, I, if there's no requirement, there's really nothing to make up for, right?
Yeah, there is something, because, because the rule now says that they can't be as close, twenty-five feet from the back of the sidewalk. Now, we're saying, okay, they can go down to ten feet, but they have to provide screening. That distance is some kind of screening. And now, now we're reducing the screening, because that's the only purpose for having this rule, twenty-five feet. So now we're reducing the screening limit, the, the length, but what kind of landscaping is going to go in here to make up for that? Is, are they saplings, are there things that will, will not screen anything?
Do we have a caliper specification for trees planted?
It's two and a half.
Two and a half caliber?
I don't know what that means.
So they are, they are smaller trees, starting off with. But I, I should mention, though, that anywhere else in the city other than PUDs, we only require a ten-foot setback. So what we're getting here, and if you recall, we are looking to change that, that regulation with the Udo as well. But what we're getting here is actually more intense landscaping than we would get in any other zone district because of this, this regulation. So without it, it would be just lawn rather than having actual screening.
Lawn and distance, I mean, there's a purpose for the distance. It's, right, I mean, otherwise, why do we even have a regulation that says twenty-five feet from the back of the sidewalk?
Well, I'm going to suggest that it's not for screening. If I stand on the sidewalk, I sure as heck can see twenty-five feet to a car.
Well, what is the purpose of it, then? What's the purpose of the regulation?
In our opinion, in staff's opinion, we, we're not sure, and that's why we'd recommend for that to go away in the future.
Well, I've asked that same question about other projects and site development plans, and, and the answer has come back that it provides some kind of distance, some kind of relief for pedestrians on sidewalks. I'm not sure how that works, but that's the reason.
Yep.
And so if we're getting rid of that reason, then we need to have something in its place. If that's, if it's a valuable thing, valuable enough to have a regulation about it, then we need to have something in its place.
It was a PUD requirement.
PUD requirement.
Everywhere else, it's ten feet. So I don't know what the rationale for what the PUD intent was. But my, my question is, is, is what do you find inadequate about the screening? Do you need a three-foot hedge? What do you, what do you want?
I, I want, I want the experts that deal with landscaping to say that there's going to be a sufficient screening in there, and it won't take place ten years from now, it'll take place sooner than that. If we have someone here that can answer that question?
So, yeah. So, as Jenna said, two and a half inch caliber tree, that's the diameter of the, of the tree, right? So it depends upon what variety of tree they put in, how quickly it'll grow. You know, typically, if I counted right, I think there's about twenty-four trees they're, they're planning to put into this site, which is, that's a lot of trees on this particular lot. So it looks like there's maples, those grow pretty standard. Lilac trees, English oak, those are upright, and white pine. So there, there's some varieties there that will grow quicker than others, the lindens, they, they all grow about the same. I mean, you're, you're going to have smaller variety trees if they go with a two and a half inch caliber tree. And they will take, you know, a few years to, to mature. But it's, they're not saplings, they're not going to be sticks that are going to snap and, and with a snow load or with wind, so. Okay. They'll be, they'll be decent sized trees, and these, some of the maple trees and the lindens grow out along a, a big, have a big canopy, so that'll have a pretty big effect, probably once they get to be mature.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from planning commission members? Brooke?
I guess to piggyback off of what you're saying, Fred, though, is that I think the screening is more important between the road and the sidewalk, especially if we're going to widen it, and the traffic's just going to go even faster. So for me, I think the increase in footage would be from the road to the sidewalk, not necessarily from the parking lot to the sidewalk. The safety of the pedestrian is more important to me than the screening of the cars to the pedestrian.
I just see that we have a requirement, and I, you know, I mean, it's, it's ours to interpret that and, and to use it somehow.
Right.
Just to ignore it. So, that's my question, but I, I agree with you also.
Thirty-Second Street right there is very busy during certain times of the day.
Anything else from planning commissioners? This is, we would like to do four motions, it appears to me. One regarding the setback, one regarding the curb cut, one regarding the signage, and then finally with the site plan. Would that meet you with your approval and clarity on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's start with the setback, then. Looking for a motion, approve or deny?
I'd motion to approve.
Is there support?
Support. No fighting.
Mallory, could you do the roll call, please?
Corbin?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBlock?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Ben Antwerp?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Vote passes.
Okay. The, the additional curb cut amendment to the PUD.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Mallory, call the roll, please.
Corbin?
Yes.
DeBlock?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Ben Antwerp?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Vote passes.
The amendment to modify the signage requirement.
I would move that we require them to do C two detailing, but that we do have it approved by staff, and I know there was discussion, how to best word that.
Okay, so if I understand what you're suggesting is that we have the PUD amended to may have the same requirements as in the C two?
Because that's what's across the street.
Okay, and then you'd like staff to do what, based on what?
I mean, that's enough for me, but I know there was more comments in our discussion...
Well, you're the, you're the one making the motion.
I know. Well, I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay, so your, your motion that you're making is to amend the PUD to allow the sign standards in C two to take place there?
Yes.
They don't have to come back to us.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, is there support for that?
However, if, if, if it is coming back for administrative review, we will need to have more of a specification as to what we're...
My understanding of what he just proposed is that we're just making it whatever the C two requirements are.
So if that's the case, then that's already what they're proposing?
So it's just approving what they're requesting?
Then I'll move it that way.
Okay, is there support for that, approving the signage amendment? Once, twice, three times? Lonely out there, I know. Motion dies for lack of support, looking for an adu, another motion, please.
Well, can we make a motion in the negative?
No, but you can say it in a different way for it to be a positive.
Or you can roll the dice.
It seems as though we'd like to put administrative review on the next level of approval. What would you recommend for a motion for that?
So first of all, I would need to know exactly what you want us to, to look at. So is it whether or not there's an electronic element to it, et cetera, et cetera?
Let's, let's just stay, if we provide administrative review, are you asking them to review the sign based on the requirements of the PUD? Or do you wish to have administrative review allow them to exceed the requirements of the PUD?
I'm comfortable with the requirements of the PUD.
Well, then, why don't you figure out how to say that in the way of a motion?
I can't figure that out.
I mean, you could, you could just say that you moved to deny the, the amendment.
I moved to deny the amendment.
Is there...
For the sign for the PUD.
Okay, support? Okay. Roll call.
All right, DeBoer?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBlock?
No.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Ben Antwerp?
Yes.
Martin?
No. Site plan.
Motion to approve the site plan as presented.
With staff recommendation?
With the, what about that fence line?
And the fence?
With the added fence? I support that. Go ahead. Maybe I can second your motion.
Motion to approve the site plan with adding a four-foot fence on the northern...
On top of the berm?
Berm, property line.
Support.
I'm going to give that one to Fred. Mallory, could you call the roll, please?
Lozano?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
DeBlock?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ben Antwerp?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Vote passes.
All righty. Do we have any public hearings to schedule?
No, but we also have, we have one more item.
Oh, yeah, that one.
Thank you.
Staff report on the planning commission annual report.
Yes, so as we discussed last month at the study session, the city of Holland has been engaged with, with MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, to become certified as a redevelopment-ready community. Council signed a memorandum of understanding back in August of twenty-seventeen stating that we would proceed with, with this process. One of the items that is required is to, is for planning commission to start providing council with a annual report. I took a shot to kind of give an example of, of something that, that we could be providing to them, and this has been provided as a draft form to our, our RRC coordinator with MEDC. So basically, what it is, is going through each of the items that we, planning commission have reviewed, and then, and giving statuses, as well as those that administratively have been approved. So what this obviously does is give that information up to city councils so that they're aware on a, on a fiscal year basis as to what has been reviewed, what's been approved, denied, and then if there is some status update at that point, where, where they're at with that. In addition to that...
Excuse me, if there's some status update where they are with that, who is the "they"?
The developers, or the builder, where the project is with, at that point.
Okay.
So, in addition to providing that, that basic information, the thought is to also look at our action steps within the 2017 master plan. Something that I've been working on is how to develop some type of an implementation strategy for the plan because we have a great plan, very progressive plan, a whole bunch of action steps. But is anyone really looking at them and progressing them? And so, so Planning Commission definitely has a significant role in doing that. So, so as you see for this master plan, I'm sorry, for this annual report, I, staff chose three of them to go through. And again, this was, was generally as an example to propose to Planning Commission for future annual reports. So, we're requesting that you adopt this annual report as presented, as proposed. And this will be sent on to council for review and then for us to progress as a separate item, which we also talked about in study session, for, for starting to develop our fiscal year 2020 plan.
So moved.
Support.
Question?
Questions, yeah. Fred?
I, I think I raised this at the last meeting when we were talking about this, but I, I have just a small concern. And this is language that we probably cannot change. But the item number three, it says identify affordable housing needs and provide housing based on need. Is this, does this mean that the Planning Commission is tasked to provide housing based on need? Or what, if not, what, what does that mean?
So, the action step itself, that's what the action step says. And so basically, it's saying to try to...
Encourage?
To try to encourage that type of housing, yes.
So, it's something within the bailiwick of what the Planning Commission's empowered to do?
So, as, as, you, you can definitely encourage. You could definitely encourage it. And you could definitely review items and determine whether or not that was a component of it, which is really what, what this in particular was doing. But it is a measurable step that, that can be used within this process.
But nothing we can affect?
Potentially, correct. I mean, there, not all of these will you be able to affect at all. And in fact, if you, if you look at it, you know, in terms of identifying affordable housing needs, only three projects that you reviewed, actually, I'm sorry, five projects that you reviewed in fiscal year 2019 had any type of affordability element at all.
And how many of those were put in place of the five?
So...
I just, I question, we're going to send this, and that's great, and that's fine. We're sending it as information to council. That's great and fine. What are you going to do with it?
My question, another question on top of that is, does this transcend both the Planning Commission and the Planning Division within the city? So, there's things that you will do that, that complement what you're mentioning in here. And there's things that we can do that, and things we can't do as a commission. Is that, would that be a fair statement? Is that this transcends both parts of the government, the Planning Commission as well as the Planning Division?
Yes, and I would even go a step further, that it really transcends all branches of government. I mean, certainly councils, certainly Parks and Recreation, certainly Transportation Services. It's, it's part of the action, the action steps of the master plan for the entire city. So, it, it's really a document that's not just, not just rooted in planning.
When you say transcend, were you meaning that it gets arbitrated at a higher level than Planning Department and Planning Commission?
I would say, yeah. I mean, there's, there's a lot of parts and pieces to this. And I'm not sure it's just a requirement or even an action by the Planning Commission. But keeping the goals in mind for the overall, for the city and the city council is really important for us to think about as we move forward.
When city council develops their goals, do they look at the master plan?
I would hope they do. I cannot answer for all my colleagues, but I would say, yes, I do.
So, all of the, the items that are in the, the next sheet, again, this really was just used as an example to show you, you know, what we were thinking about for the future. If you would like me to take this out of this plan, we can do that. You know, out of this annual report, we can do that. It was just showing you what our idea was in terms of progressing the action steps forward as much as you can do on Planning Commission.
And I guess that's my concern, is that our, our ability to do that is really, really limited on most of these. And basically, so what we're doing as a report is these developers came in and presented these things that meet the action steps. And that's fine, but I just want to make sure that we understand what this is about. And then for council to determine what they're going to do with it. And I understand it's a requirement of whatever this thing is, but we've taken a bunch of hundred-thousand-foot things and turned them into fifty-thousand-foot things. And then we're going to put check marks if a developer happens to come in and present something that fits in that category.
So, again, we, we don't need to do that. That is not a requirement. That was a suggestion by staff to try to move the needle on some of these items to at least keep it in the minds of the Planning Commission as we're going through different developments. It's not a requirement. It can be taken out. And to Mr. Corbin's point, there, in the, in the other action steps that were provided to you in your packets for review with choosing the next three, if you recall, there was a designation as to which goals they pertain to, council goals. So, there were four chief goals. And then I did also provide a breakdown as to what are in those goals. So, we are trying to align those, those goals together, which was a great point that, that you brought up last month. These, again, were just used as examples. But if you would like me to take them out, I absolutely can. But I do think that Planning Commission needs to think about how Planning Commission can progress with the master plan. And so this was just staff's suggestion. But if it's too complicated or if it's not clear, then certainly we, we can take that out and figure something else out.
I guess, I guess my concern is, is that if it's actually something that we can impact on our own, great. But if it's something that, I mean, I'm just going to put this out here as a suggestion, as an example. If it's affordable housing, we have no ability to do anything but say, can you please, right? Whereas city council could come in and say, here's the demographic we want to hit, here's the product that we want to do. And in order to do that, we'd like you to develop an ordinance that does this, okay? And once we get it, then we can do something with it. But until that empowerment at this level happens, and that's my concern with a lot of these things, is that they're all so fuzzy, okay, and intentionally so, but they're really policy directives that should come from somebody who makes policy.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we clarify, even council can't create ordinance to require housing of that, of that nature.
I understand, but there's methodologies of granting incentives and things of that, okay? So, but you have to direct somebody to do that, otherwise it won't be done, right?
I think the way I look at this is that there's a number of projects coming before us, and we made sure that they complied with the ordinances that we're, that we have in place. And we're showing that this is what we've done. And this, and then in turn, the Planning Commission's looking at this and saying, this is how it meets the goals of also, how they work with inside the goals of the city. And I think that's, that's how I read this document. So, I don't know if anyone else is, but that's how I read this document.
Well, I, you know, when we, when we are looking at action steps that are in the comprehensive plan, it seems to me that we, or the, excuse me, the master plan, it seems like it's a good idea to have the Planning Commission target certain things for the coming year, the coming five years or whatever, and that we, we should list those and prioritize them and take some responsibility for doing them if they're within our bailiwick. And that regardless of any other assessment of the master plan, that would be a good thing for us. And, and I would, I would really urge that we do something like that. And if, if, as you say, the master plan also includes many other things from many other departments in our community, some, some planning departments keep track of that as well. Every action step sometimes is identified as someone's responsibility. It could be the traffic department, it could be some other department. And then they can kind of keep track of that at a city manager level. But at, at the planning level, at the Planning Commission, I would, I would love to urge you to, to have action steps that we would feel ownership for and, and we would keep in mind as we go through the year. So, I don't know where that leaves this. I just wanted to make that statement.
Well, there you go.
And I guess I'm in favor since this has been, I mean, maybe looking forward, we can change, make some changes. But since this is where we are today, I think that you've probably complied with everything we were supposed to do and that, and that we should go forward with this, with the idea that we would make some changes for the next one.
Jenna, just so unclear, you gave these three things in here, you, as examples. Was it your intent to substitute the three things that we just came up with in there and then go backwards? Or was the three things we come up with going forward?
Going forward.
Okay. So, we could, we could, we could say, this is great and groovy and go with it. Send it to city council as information. And then we can have a maybe deeper conversation about what this document is to us. And perhaps the council folks here could take it back to council at some point and say, what should this document mean to them? I, I think that this could be a viable thing, but I just, I just want to make sure that it's something that whoever is responsible for it can actually implement portions of it. And that's my, that's my only concern. Lynn, you have a kind of a quizzical look.
No, I mean, I think it was something that I was, at the end of our study session, I talked about capacity. And I think, I, I think the other thing that Jenna, I think you addressed at the end of the study session was also the idea of, well, the way I interpreted it was making recommendations. And I think there may be a way that we can, even though we're not, we don't have necessarily the capacity to address some of the things that we're looking at, we can make recommendations to city council like other committees do. So, that's a possibility as well, I think, to be, to look at some of the things. We, we maybe can't act on it, but we can ask them to, to consider.
I think we have, I think we have some specificity about what we're recommending to city council. Intention, I guess, would be the word I would use as opposed to fifty thousand feet. I would completely agree with you. Because I would rather have the directive come back and say, yeah, that's something we want to look at, go, go forward on it. So, does that make sense to you, Jenna?
It does.
All right.
Well, with, with that, then I'd like to move that we approve the fiscal year 2019 Planning Commission annual report.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Any scheduling of public hearings?
No.
Any communications for commission members? Any communications from staff?
No, thank you.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying bye.
Bye.
All pose same sign.